So thank everybody once again for tuning in. I'm looking forward to hearing what our speaker has to say. Hopefully, we can get back, or at least I can get back to sending out emails to you about the different things that we're working on so far as amnesty, writing letters, signing petitions and what have you. One thing I would remind you of is that when I send these out, I would appreciate it if you would let me know that you actually signed or wrote the letter. That way, I can get back to headquarters and let them know that we've done something. For those of you who are not members, Ken is our treasurer, and he is taking contributions, says twenty dollars a month, twenty dollars a year for an individual, thirty dollars for a family, and fifteen for a student. This is per year, just a good investment. And we plan on if and when we can ever get back to meeting together again, we expect to do a lot more, have a lot more activities. So with that, I'll turn it back over to my friend and let him do the introductions and what have you.
One thing I just wanted to add is, you know, when we were, when we met in person at the church, we would have hard copy letters for members and attendees to sign and fill out an address envelope that we would, you know, one of our members and now the club or the chapter would, you know, buy the stamp and mail it, okay? Since we have started doing virtual meetings, we, once in a while, either Bob or I send out letters for you to either, you know, send it by email or print it out and mail it, just like what we used to do in the past. So please, you know, when Bob or I send these things out, please take care of those action alerts, and they really make a big difference. Okay, all right, so now for our main speaker here, Dr. Latisha Plummer. She is the current Houston City Council member-at-large, position four. And then before that, she was a world famous dentist that we all knew, and we worked on her campaigns before. So Latisha, and the title or the topic of her talk is Black Woman's History. And Latisha, she has a history, a family history of civil rights and human rights activity. Her father was very active here in Houston. And so she brings a wealth of knowledge from her personal story about this topic. So Latisha, please join, join me in welcoming Dr. Latisha Plummer.
Thank you. Thank y'all so, so much for having me, and on such a great topic. I wanted to give you a little bit of my background. It's very diverse. My mom is actually half Yemen and half Persian. And my dad is Black American. My mom and dad met when my dad was in the Peace Corps in East Africa, in Mabasa. And so I'll tell you a funny story. My dad, my mom was on the radio, a radio broadcaster person, and he heard her voice, and he says he fell in love with her then. So I'm not sure how true all that is, but that's the story they're telling us. And another funny story is that my grandfather and my grandmother did not know my parents were getting married. My uncle wrote the letter asking my grandfather for my mom's hand in marriage and forged my grandfather's name on it. So when they got, when they, when my dad brought my mom back from Kenya, from Mabasa, they circled the block, I think this is like two hours. They just drove around, around, and my mom was little, and she had her Kenyan garb on, and she was, you know, and my grandmother was like, oh, my gosh, you know, it was crazy. So it's a great, it's a great story, and I love it because it really does allow me to engage in really what diversity looks like in the fight for human rights. And that's why the organization is so important and what you're doing now. And my mom was, there were prejudices against her. She was Muslim and not from here. And so there were a lot of things that she struggled with, just being new in the United States, that my dad had to work with her through. And my grandfather was a civil rights attorney. And so just the engagement of civil rights, understanding how important it is to have equity and fairness across the board was something that was always kind of in that household. And I do believe that that's how they raised us. My grandmother was an educator. And so just growing up, just always understanding the differences that I had and knowing that those differences really were kind of my superpower in understanding different ideals and cultures and not apologizing for it, but really kind of just embracing it. Took me some time, but it's something that I think that now I'm really able to utilize. And so being a Black woman in America right now, and just the human rights that we struggle with, historically, as you know, in the East African culture, there were so many things that were done to women. And the Muslim, in the Muslim religion, the understanding of the rights of a woman is something that's always really being spoken about. And so me educating people and letting them know that it's not that we're submissive, or we don't have rights or privileges. It's just done in a different manner. And so really understanding that balance of culture has really given me a good understanding of really how Houston is, because we're so diverse here. And so when we talk about human rights or civil rights, you have to really think about all of them, right? It's not just the civil rights that we, the rights of life, liberty, and security, but it's the political aspect of it, the voices that we have. And it's women across the world typically don't have a voice in many ways. And often, you know, in the history that we'll talk about, we had to fight for those. We're talking economic rights. I mean, that's the right to work, but then also in slavery, right? We didn't have rights. We didn't get paychecks or money. And so those economic rights were something we have to always keep in the forefront. Our social rights, the rights of education. As many of you know, we had segregated societies at that time. And so the level of that education was different. We see a lot of those now, in a lot of those Black and Brown poor communities. We don't have the same, the same resources that are spent in those communities. And so we're seeing an unjust level of academic rights in a lot of ways. Cultural rights, including the right to freely participate in the cultural community is something we have to focus on. And lastly, you know, collective rights, the rights for self-determination. So these are, these are different categories that I believe are really important. We talk about the overarching idea of women's human rights, but specifically Black women. So we go back to slavery, slavery, forced labor, and human trafficking violations and human rights. You know, it was, it was the way in which our human rights really were stripped, those inherent basic rights of just our bodies and the work that we did. America and slavery developed side by side. In 1619 is the first recollection of slavery. You know, twenty captive slaves in Africa were sold. And this continued for, you know, for decades. People were captured, they were brought against their will. And they were obviously brought, you know, brought to this country. One thing that I want to bring upon, and when we talk about slavery in general, is the women's position in slavery. So oftentimes, you know, there were, there were, there were field women, and then there were women in the house, right? And most of the time, the women that were more educated, were able to read or write, they were able to be in the home, where the other women were able to be, you know, kind of in the field. And so the men were constantly treated or taken somewhere or moved around. So the women's stability, the Black women's stability in the household is something that we really hold dear, and we see a lot of that power and strength in women now. My grandmother is ninety-eight, and I honestly believe that she is just, she stands so grounded in so many ways, I think, because she is a child of a slave. And so we had to keep the house together. We had to make sure that the network of the family was consistent because we didn't know if the men were coming back. And that followed us into war as well. You know, we really had to, we were the foundational strength. The Black women were really the foundational strength of our household. And then we move into history in terms of slave patrols. And the African-American, I mean, the American South relied almost exclusively on slave labor. And while white Southerners lived in near constant fear of slave rebellion disrupting economic status quo. And as a result, these patrols were the earliest and the most prolific forms of policing that we see in the South. And so, you know, we're seeing in the history how things change. And as we did get a little bit more rights and its freedoms were created, there still was a way in which there was a holding down, a lack of equity along the way in our historical and in the historical writings of what we know. And then we have the rise of the cotton industry in seventeen ninety-three. And that was the demand of enslaves, you know, it actually increased. In seventeen ninety-three, the Congress passed a Fugitive Slave Act, which made it a federal crime to assist a slave, this person of escaping. So as you see, you know, historically, you know, we're fighting for those rights. But because of the nature of what we were dealing with, there were still very few rights that we had. And then emancipation proclamation happened. And in that, it didn't give the enslaved freedom. But in Texas, you know, two years later, Juneteenth even blocked people, you know, they were free, and women, and women were as well. But then once you move into that space, Jim Crow laws came into effect. I mean, the history is just so profound in terms of what we're dealing with. But Jim Crow laws happened, we saw a lot of segregation. And this is a time where I remember stories of my family. This is the time where now I remember my grandmother saying that she went to school in a segregated situation. They couldn't eat in the cafeteria together, the water fountains, they couldn't drink. Of all the things that you see on television, she actually gives me honest recollections of what she remembers as a child. And then as my grandfathers, they told me a story about voting, you know, about how they could not go vote. And they didn't understand, my grandmother was so naive, she didn't understand why. And my grandfather actually was one of the first attorneys that fought for voting rights when they were in Alabama. And so they, that, this is a time of history where I actually can remember conversations I still have and have with my grandfather. My grandfather is passed now, but my grandmother. And so she was part of that suffragette movement, right? She was part of women really actually being able to vote and have a voice. And Black men were given the right to vote after the Civil War, but weren't really able to vote in many places, and that's exactly what I'm speaking of now. And so, you know, it was something that we, we see now. You know, we're going to bring all this kind of full circle, but often, all the things that we're talking about right now are really what we see currently happening in present day, like right now, we're seeing it happen. And so the Civil Rights Act was passed in nineteen fifty-seven, allowing federal prosecution of anyone attempting to prevent anyone from voting and creating that commission to investigate voter fraud. And doesn't this sound so familiar, right? They're literally struggling with this right now in the state capital. You know, then we move to kind of to present day in Georgia. The new slate of voting laws, government, you know, Governor Brian Kemp signed SB two oh two, a ninety-eight-page bill on Thursday. The Election Integrity Act of 2021 was passed out of the legislative legislature on a party line vote, and makes a number of controversial changes of how elections are run. I mean, this is current day, but there's so much parallelism to what we were talking about over a hundred years ago. The same things are happening now. But now the sad part is, it's not happening to one race or culture. It's happening to a whole party. And I think that's what the, and that's what the new conversation is. And what we're seeing now is that same fight for freedom, that same fight for freedoms really across the board are now our children, right? Your grandchildren, your children, my, my, you know, twenty-one-year-old is really having a voice, and they're saying, no, this is not going to happen, and this is why. And so I think what you, what you see now in all these women running for office, this is how I believe, especially for a Black woman, to speak from my perspective, as a Black woman, not really being able to have a voice. And I'm speaking from a Black Muslim woman, right? And also a Black woman. Black Muslim women in my household had a place, and it wasn't a place of disrespect. It was really a place of respect. And so having a voice in that way has been something I've had to find. But then also, as a Black woman, you know, following the matriarch of my family, my grandmother, is also a different one. And so I get to see the fight on both sides, which is really powerful because it's a cultural shift, but it's also a racial shift. And it's really quite interesting, I believe, in many ways. And so I think that's why I've taken on so many of the social fights in my first year of office, really looking at police reform, really looking at equity, maternal mortality that's happening to Black women that we're struggling with, truly finding out why our moms die at childbirth more than any other racial group. So looking at health inequities and really being able to figure out how do we bring those into those spaces and really level the playing field to allow everyone, and, you know, like you're speaking of, just the human rights of a person. And oftentimes, people say these are progressive ideas, but I think they're more human ideas. They're just more ideas that we have gone through historically, ways that we have not been able to have a voice. And now it's time for us to fight for one. And so Black women in politics are on the rise right now, right? I mean, there's still more Black women needed in politics, obviously. So if you look at the percentage of where, what we represent in the nation, we don't see that same type of representation in the political space. But it's time for us to talk about these issues and really, you know, we are a large voting bloc. But oftentimes, Black women will tilt, you know, and allow folks to get into political office. But then once people get there, the things that we really need to see happen and change don't get done. And so I think that's where our, that's what our responsibility is, is to make sure the things that matter, the issues that matter within our communities as Black women, as Black people throughout history, are really relished in history moving forward and really are able to to be represented in the way that we need to be represented. And so that's my, I feel like in a lot of ways, that's my responsibility. But you do it in a way of respect, right? You do it in a way of balance. And I believe that the best way to do that is focusing on issues. And so my issue, and it's always been, and Mohammed knows this, but my issue's always been equity and making sure that we balance the playing field. We allow everyone to be successful. The pie is big enough for everyone. And I don't want to see a repeat of history. I want to talk about history in that history book, but I want to move forward in a way of where that's equitable and fair. And this is why amnesty is so important, because you really are bringing a light to making sure that this happens. And it's going to be one of those fights where it's not a short fight, it's a long fight. And, you know, my grandmother's ninety-eight, and she's been fighting for her freedoms literally her entire life. And I believe that we shouldn't have to fight that long again. And so, you know, your organization and what you do and what you bring to the table is so, so important. And so with that, I don't want to continue to kind of lecture. I want to really be in a conversation with all of you and answer questions and maybe give you some examples of kind of what I've done and why I feel this is so, I'm so passionate about this, this topic.
Okay, so we'll just open up for questions now. So unmute yourself and identify yourself and then ask the questions, okay? Just keep them short.
I just wrote one, and it's, "Black women are also lagging behind in economic power. How can this be corrected? How do you see this coming about, especially in the next, you know, next ten years or maybe less?"
That's a great question. So, so yes, you're exactly right. We lack in economic power. We also, we are leading in entrepreneurship, but yet we only get, we only get financial support about ten to fifteen percent of the time. I'm going to give you guys a very personal story. If I walk into a bank currently, like right now, walk into a bank and ask for a loan, it's very difficult for me to get a loan. If someone of white persuasion walks into the room to get a loan, it's a whole different conversation. It still happens. We see it historically in redlining in terms of home buying and created, the creation of economics. So I believe it starts with home purchases, honestly. It starts with really building a foundational investment support that's there. And after that, really, financial, financial intelligence and how we negotiate and how we do get a CPA and how we make sure our records are there, and really teaches those basic ideas that we really weren't taught. It wasn't a conversation that happened at the dinner table for us. And so really, financial intelligence is where we change the game, to be completely honest. It's learning how to make investments. It's making sure that we have ownership of homes. It's understanding that it's not buying the materialistic ideas, the cars and the things that lose, that lose value. You, it's really putting money in the bank and being able to cash flow. And then having supportive financial institutions that recognize that this is an issue and allowing us to be able to be competitive. And so it's definitely something that's happening. And I'll tell you, we just started an organization called Her Wealth, and it is for that exact reason. It's to create, it's a, it's, it's a way for people, for women of color to come together and basically crowdfund. And so when I say crowdfund, I don't mean, you know, we're all putting money in a pot. I mean that it's a network of a directory where, as we spend dollars, a portion of those dollars go into a fund. And we now are able to give micro lending to a small minority-owned business that will allow them to get where they need to go. So it's creating more networks like that to where we can compete, honestly. But it comes down to financial literacy. And oftentimes, Black women, we lead in single-family households as well. And so we don't have the opportunity to build that coupled wealth that a lot of, a lot of, a lot of other nationalities were able to do. And so really reteaching and understanding, we don't have to live month to month. And we really are able to get what we need to do. We just have to plan a bit differently. And so, and so that's really where it starts, honestly. And we're getting there. I mean, we're leading, because we lead in entrepreneurship. We just have to learn how to bundle better and come together. And if we can't get a bank to do it for us, then we need to come together as women and create entities where we can create that wealth.
Yeah, thank you.
That's a great question.
I'm confused. You are obviously a very successful Black woman. You're a dentist. You're on the Houston City Council. Doesn't that say something for Black women?
Absolutely. So if I could be completely transparent and open and authentic with all of you, yeah. So on the front-facing, absolutely, Bob, you're right. On the front-facing, my resume looks amazing. But the amount of work and effort it takes on a daily basis is really, really difficult. I'm a single mother of three boys. I've tried to maintain a solid educational background for them. So I don't have the money saved that someone else would. And so I have been able to be successful in my practice because my dad taught me how to save money. So I don't have a lot of debt. I don't have a fancy, fancy house. Focusing on cars and more materialistic values are not something that I, that have ever been anything that's really important to me. But that's very different than how some other people walk in their lives. You see what I'm saying? And so, I mean, to this day, though, you know, it is very, I tried to buy a piece of equipment for a hundred thousand dollars. The bank wanted every single thing possible. They're like, well, Dr. Plummer, you're not cash flowing well. Well, you're too much risk because you don't have any partners. You're not married, so if something happened to you, how will we be able to make sure we can make the loan? So those are the conversations that I continue to push forward on. But somebody that maybe not, doesn't have that stick-to-it-ness would give up and kind of throw their hands in the air, you know what I'm saying? And so it's not easy. I definitely am grateful, and I do feel like I'm accomplished. But it has been a lot more than just me. It has been my family support, knowing that if I fall back, someone's going to catch me. It has been having really great kids that I'm not worried about. They're not in the criminal justice system. It's a lot that's allowed me to do the work that I've done right now. And so we all, the things that happen behind the walls are really the issues that we're talking about very authentically right now. And if you don't have the strength and fortitude, then it's really, really hard to push through.
So what you're arguing is that when you go to the bank, in spite of your success, you are treated differently because you aren't Black?
So I can't officially say that's happening, okay? But I will tell you, I know that it is. Because when I, I have a really good friend of mine, same practice, same tax return, who very looks the same, he's a white male, went to school together. The truth of the matter was, we both went to Wells Fargo, and he got a whole different answer than I did. And so I'm not saying it's necessarily because I'm Black necessarily, but I definitely believe that no matter, no matter what we do, there is definitely a stigma that is there. And I can't prove it, it's not something that anyone has said to me, but I have not been able to qualify, and I have a million-dollar practice. I have not been able to qualify a loan, for a loan, in twenty-three years.
Really?
The only reason I was able to get my second practice was because of a micro lender called Lift Fund, which is called Axion. I'm not sure if y'all are familiar with them. But they gave me a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar loan. And I have great, my credit is not perfect, you know, because obviously I'm raising kids and trying to keep things going. But no, I have never been able to get a loan, ever. And what happens, and I'll be very honest with you. What happens when you're not able to do that, but you still have the urge to grow, is that you do things like this organization called Can Capital that buys your receivables. But they're loan sharks. But you want to move forward, you know what I'm saying? So then you end up finding, going to those guys for financial support, right? And they're taking much more than they need to, which really cycles their growth. And so, yeah, it's, it is very, it is very, very real. It is very, very real.
Louisa, you have a question? How can I comment in the, in the comment section?
I have a comment. Latisha, you got a double whammy, you're a female, too. And you men don't realize it, but it's really much more difficult for a woman to negotiate any kind of financial thing than it is for a man. Then you've got to walk this little line of you've got to be tough, but you can't be too tough. You have to be sweet and tough. There are little lines you got to walk. But I have to, I've been thinking about this, and honest to God, Black women saved our democracy.
Oh, thank you.
And I've been thinking and thinking about how you're so strong, and I still don't know. When I raised my son, I never worried about was some cop going to kill him if he was speeding? I mean, burdens that you're bearing, I cannot imagine. Somehow you've come through all this and you still believe in America? And I just have no words, but I just want to tell you, thank you.
Oh, you're so awesome, thank you. But I think that's why with that, through that historical kind of narrative, because I believe that it's not just, we, I think you've got it genetically, to be honest. It's the constant fight, but the balance of always having hope. And so, you know, even though we were enslaved, we knew we would be free one day, right? Even though we were free, we knew we could work one day. Even though we could work one day, we knew one day we could start our own business. It's just like that, it's that constant balance of fight and hope that keeps us afloat. And I think that's honest, I think it's in us genetically, to be honest. I really, I really, really do. And I don't feel like the, all the work that was done in history is not taken for granted. It is absolutely acknowledged and recognized. And so, yeah, we have, we just, we just have to kind of, you know, kind of keep it going. But you're rightly, in a lot of ways, the distractions that we manage, I'll tell you, I kept my kids in private school, not because I could afford it, but because I was a single mother that could not manage my kid being in class with thirty kids. Because I couldn't afford the behavioral issues that would take me away from my practice, that would not allow me to put food on the table. And so the sacrifice I made to keep them private school wasn't because I was being elitist. It was because I honestly needed them in a room with fifteen or twelve kids, because I could not be away from my practice. Every moment I wasn't there, I was not, it was affecting my bottom line and taking care of the boys, right? And so it, those smaller groups, being able to communicate with a teacher directly was not a barrier for me. But that means I don't have the level of savings that somebody else would have either, right? And so my cash in my account, going back to you, Bob, what you were saying, I don't have the cash in my account that if I could have put them in public school, I probably would have right now. So it was an investment that I I was forced to make. It wasn't a choice for me. And 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 even now, you know, I mean, my my kids, they drive around, but I'm paranoid all the time. Like, they have to, I had to get them this little advisor thing that has their insurance card, and they've got, at the time, Chief Austin Abado's number in his phone, in their phones, and you know, that's just because I'm a council member, you know? But I mean, what if he, but some people can't do that, you know, or have that opportunity. And I worry about them all the time. You know, my kid was arrested when he was thirteen or fourteen years old, walking USU. I mean, he was fully detained by the West, by the West U police. Because he looked like someone that was breaking into a house. He was in a collared shirt and khaki shorts. You know, and because his friends went to school and 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 he's at Presbyterian School. So this is something I've been focused on ever since my boys were little. So this is not a new fight for me. It's a different fight for me. And that's why I really do look at social injustices in a different way. Because I don't ever get to rest when it comes to them. I never get to rest. And it's not an excuse, and I don't whine about it or complain about it. It is what I have to deal with. And I wear it, and I don't complain about it. But it is something that I want to, honestly, I want to change. I really do want to change it for everybody. Yeah.
A good reference for this is the article that Chris Tomlinson wrote Sunday in the Houston Chronicle, talking about investment companies. And how some ninety-five percent of them are all white male. And then it turns out, though, that some of the diversified investment companies are actually doing better. And he talked about trying to break through the wall of white supremacy and actually level the playing field. And there has been some success in that, but there's a long ways to go.
Absolutely. And there's another point that I want to kind of bring forward. It's it's your lineage as well, right? It's, I was incredibly fortunate to have parents that were educated, that were financially secure, that were incredibly hardworking. I don't know if anyone works harder than my dad or my grandmother or my mom, right? Just really hardworking, the work ethic level was just heavy in our household. But think about kids that don't have mentorships and don't have any, any one to look up to or don't even think they can achieve anything. And this is why the educational system is so critical. Because you have to be able to see where you can go. I mean, at twelve years old, I knew I'd be a dentist. And it was no option for me. My dad didn't say, oh, you get to pick what you want to do. No, I was sucking spit at twelve years old in a dental practice, you know what I mean? And I had no options, right? But at least in my brain, I knew I could achieve it because my dad was it. And he was in front of me every day. But there's so many children that just don't have that. And so, Dom, when you talk about investment opportunities, I mean, my gosh, that's so far from the wealth of I of being possible, you know? When you can't get a good meal, or, you know, you're living in a house with ten other people of five different generations, or it's just, you know, the the contrast is so heavy. And but it really starts with teaching financial literacy, making sure our kids are educated in in an equitable way, having the same opportunities, because there's a difference in the level of potential. It's just a difference in level of opportunity.
Anybody else have any questions? Hey, Laura, go ahead, unmute and ask.
I was wondering if you think having, like, a universal basic income or an income floor would help to increase equity?
Yeah, no, that's that's a really good question. You know, I, so I'm a business owner, right? And so I do believe that competitiveness, right, is necessary. I don't think, well, I don't think that it would be necessary if we leveled the playing field from an academic perspective. If everyone got the same basics of opportunity, if everyone got paid fair and equal livable wages, right, that's where they could actually live. If college was not something you had to opt out of because you couldn't afford it, if those things were in place, I believe that we wouldn't have to make sure that everyone has a foundational idea or a foundational salary. We just need the opportunity, honestly. Because I will tell you this, and I'm just speaking for myself, there's a level of pride in the black community. Black, especially black men, I mean, yeah, I don't justify or or make excuses for theft. I I I really, really don't. But we're seeing a high level of petty theft right now. It's because they don't have a job. They've got nothing, and it's across the board. It's not just in one community. So I believe that if we could just educate our folks, make sure that they have jobs coming out of college, making sure when they get out of, get out of high school, they have a job that's paying fifteen dollars an hour at a minimum, we give more support to our trade schools, really creating that, because I do believe that the black community wants to learn to fish. I don't believe they want a handout. They just need an opportunity. Our kids right now aren't even going to school because, or they're parking, they're literally pulling up in their school's parking lots because they don't have Wi-Fi. You know what I'm saying? I mean, and they go to school because they need lunch. I mean, these are real things I'm seeing right now. And so we just need opportunity, Laura, honestly. We just need a shot. And and right now, if we don't just give, Wi-Fi should be on a, the city of Houston should have towers that we own, that allows every single person within our six hundred thou, how many square miles we are, should have access to Wi-Fi. Wi-Fi should not be something that the, only the upper middle class should have. You know, this is why, I mean, this is why the kids can't go to school. So that's what I'm talking about. Really basic things that really can be done. It's not hard to do. I mean, we're sending folks to the moon and Mars. We can't have Wi-Fi for everybody. This is kind of, doesn't make sense to me. You know what I'm saying? So it's opportunity, Laura. It's just opportunity. That's all. It's all we need is opportunity.
Anyone else have any questions? For Dr. Plummer? Hey, Latisha, what what do you, what what are your thoughts about the the voter suppression bills that are being passed or in the process here in Austin right now? How will that impact our future?
Oh, it is devastating. It is, I mean, it is just, it is, it is devastating. I I just can't believe this is where we are. We are just going back to zero. It is just, I I I don't even have words, honestly, Mohammed. It is just going to set us back decades. It really, really is. And it's all in preparation for this this governor's race. I know, I know what the plan is. Not, it's not only that the voter suppression, it's also, it's also the gerrymandering. You know, those, those, the lines that have been drawn are going to support one specific issue. It is really going to be difficult. It is really going to be difficult to win Texas on a statewide race.
Wow.
You know, luckily, you know, Harris County obviously is is blue, so we do well there. And I do believe our commissioners' court is doing an amazing job, really putting things in place, bringing things to the front that we need to have conversations about. But from a statewide perspective, this is terrifying. And and like I said before, it's not racial anymore. It it's got nothing to do with race. You know what I'm saying? It's all based on socioeconomics and political fighting. You know what I mean? It's it's just got nothing to do with race now, which is even scarier. Because now it just covers more people. And 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 the lack of hope in so many cultures and so many communities, they look at it and they're like, what is the point? Nothing's really going to change. What is the point? And so when that happens, that's where we're, that's where the fear comes into place. Because if we don't have any more hope, or we don't feel like it's actually possible to change something, then that's where we have to be terrified. Because hope is the only thing keeping us going.
All right. Does anybody else have any questions or comments?
I have a comment. I feel helpless about what we can do to change these circumstances. And let me give you a little history. I'm the son of a foundry worker, a school janitor, a bus driver. I ended up dropping out of high school, but ended up getting a bachelor's degree and a master's degree in diplomatic history that was famous for a good many years. And I don't understand why other people, given my background, can't do the same thing. Can you comment on that? You know, I'm a member of the Unitarian Universalist Church. We're committed to all kinds of good things. But what can we as individuals do to change the situation that you have just described?
First, elect more people like Latisha.
Yes.
Good point.
Well, no, I'm serious. The kinds of things she's talking about, the Wi-Fi towers, the, the basic opportunities. One person can't luck into all that by himself or herself very often. You've got whole communities that are suffering. If you rig the votes so that we can't elect people like Latisha, what can you do? Start a fund to draft Stacey Abrams to run for president. That's what you can do.
No, that's so true. Bob, can I ask you, can I, do you mind if I ask you just a couple of questions?
Sure.
Okay, so when you were, when you were in school, both your parents worked, obviously very essential working jobs, right?
Yeah.
Were there schools in other communities that that were more predominant, you know, predominantly black or brown? Did you, do you remember a difference between the schools?
Oh, I'll tell you a story about that.
Okay.
When I was in the fourth grade.
Okay.
There were two black students at my school. One was my older brother's age, one was my age.
Okay.
One day at recess, the the black boy my age, who was my friend, got into a fight. And following the fight, I hung back to support him. And he turned to me and he said, the reason you guys are picking on me is because I'm colored. And that was my first recognition of the difference in skin color. And I walked him back to the classroom. He was my friend forever. And I will never forget that experience. That was my first recognition difference between black and white. And he's the one that made the difference.
So if I could take you into his mindset, right, when you, when you, it's almost like a person, you know, I don't want to compare it to a person with disabilities, but in in your mind, when there's already something that limits who you are in any level of inferiority, and as a child especially, and you don't have parents that are able to really coach you through that and kind of get you through that, it is very, very difficult to matriculate in the same manner. You know what I'm saying? And so, and like I say, it's not, it should never be an excuse or something that we apologize for, but it is something that is very, very real in the mind of someone. And once you understand or in your brain think there's any level of inferiority, and when you look on television, the only ones that are successful are the athletes. Or when you're, you know, when you walk into, not a courthouse, but when you walk into an office building, you don't see the CEO looking like you. You know what I'm saying? All of those are subliminal messages of a level of inferiority. And so it is very difficult to navigate through that if you don't have someone to talk you through it. And like I said, I'm not, yeah, it it really is. And it's something that maybe not is said outwardly, but it is something that you said that you have in your mind. It's something, I don't know who mentioned that earlier, but when I was running for Congress, and Mohammed will know this, my, the people that coached me were like, okay, listen, Latisha, your eyes get real big when you're serious, so make your eyes a bit smaller. When you speak, you know, make sure you're speaking, but don't sound like you're angry. You know, be careful, because then you're going to sound like a mad woman, you know? And it was a bad black woman. And so we're always, so women in general have to kind of find our space. But then as a black woman, I can't be too strong and too powerful, because then I'm, then I'm angry and 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 pissed off, you know? But then if I'm quiet and a little bit, then I'm not strong enough to lead. And so it's just always like this balance. And so when I ran for Congress, it really worked on me. I had to, I struggled a lot, try to figure out where that balance was. And so I was an adult, so just imagine a child. And so what happens, Bob, is it causes you to kind of retreat? And instead of sitting on the front row of class, you sit in the middle and maybe in the back? And maybe your grades aren't good enough. It just, it's at these, these constant subliminal messages of inferiority. And as you do that, then you don't graduate from high school, but you're definitely not bold enough to go to college. And you need for hell, like, bold enough to get a doctorate or a bachelor's degree. You know what I'm saying? It just, it's kind of like that mindset, and that's the part that we have to work through.
Okay, okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
It does. Thank you very much.
No, thank you for being so honest with me. This is just, I just wish we had more conversations like this. This is so good.
Let's keep having conversations.
Yeah, it's really important. It it it's really, really important. And so when I go into like a black or brown community when there are no books, but then I have my son at Shadow Creek, you know, or Lamar, and he's got books and a computer, it's very subliminal, but it it's an equity. And then when you've got mom that's working three jobs and grandma that maybe only reads on a third or fourth grade level, then how do you, how do you get to where you need to go? And then that child now misbehaves, they're now a problem, they now turn to drugs because they see the person driving a fancy car. You know, then they're having a child at an early age, so now they can't worry about school, they got to take care of the baby. And then they're incarcerated. You know, it just, it's, it's just like this consistent track. And so oftentimes, I don't want to talk about police reform. And when I fought my, when I fought for my amendments, if you look at my amendments, they were very little about police reform and training. It was about my brother's keepers programs. It was about second chances. It was about putting money into minority businesses. It was about, you know, citywide Wi-Fi, you know, in areas of communities. It was those things, because my idea is, let's handle the issue at the root of the problem, and that's opportunity. And then our kids won't need to do all the extra stuff, because they could, they know that they can be doctors, lawyers, and Indian chiefs. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
And that's where we miss the boat. We keep on talking about what happens when they're already in jail. I don't want to get them in jail.
Right.
I I, you know, I want the kids to be as confident my boys are when the police car pulls up behind them. Not one of, oh, my God, did my cousin leave something in the trunk? Oh, my gosh, I'm shitting on a car. Oh my gosh, I'm sharing a car with four of the people in my house. Did they leave something in here? You know, that, well, my boys know, here's my license and my insurance.
Gotcha.
You see what I'm saying? And now they're so concerned and worried and they get nervous. And they have to keep their hands in a certain place and their phones are above, right? And they've got me on speed dial. They get me on the phone immediately. But their worry isn't, they know they've been in their car, no one else has been in the car, there are no guns in the car. You know what I'm saying? That, the, the, there's a little bit of peace to where if they do, they, they do search the cars, that I could find anything.
Very good response. Thank you.
You're welcome. No, thank you.
Uh, I've got a question and a comment quickly before we close out. Most of us are involved as political activists, to put it, to put it mildly, right, Suzie?
Yeah.
And, uh, I don't know what is planned for voter registration this year in light of the pandemic. Now, I am a deputy voter registrar again this year. I just got this in the mail, uh, last week. And I want to use it, darn it, you know? Uh, have any of you heard?
We're hoping that we'll be able in the fall to set up with the college, you know, uh, that sort of thing. But, uh, what has, what happened when we got hit with the COVID? When most of what we were doing got shut down? Two things. Rosie Flanagan, bless her heart, was still after apartment managers. You know, give your new tenants one of these in the new packet. Because the two problems, of course, are access and turnover in apartments. And this at least lets us keep handling the turnover part. And, uh, Mohammed's thinking of things, uh, did food distribution, food bank things. We did, uh, turn out the vote and voter registration at those. That was Mohammed's idea and
Yeah, that was great.
When I sent out word about it, Heidi Gordon is always looking for a new way in Galveston County to get it done. She's, oh, that's brilliant.
No, that's really good.
Yeah, so, so Johnny, just a, just a quick comment on that. We, uh, you know, thanks to Precinct Two Adrian Garcia, uh, his office was doing what, uh, food distribution in different parts of Harris County Precinct Two. And everywhere they went, we were there with volunteers and we were handing out voter registration applications to every one of them for them to fill it out and mail it. So we gave out, over, I think, six months, we gave out almost two thousand of those in different languages.
Yeah, I know Adrian would open as many doors as possible for us, yeah. But I don't know what else is going on, uh, in light of the COVID, yeah.
But if you, if you come up with a bright idea, let us know.
No, I'm gonna keep it to myself, Suzie. It's mine. You know how selfish I am.
If any of y'all need any support on that too, I would love to implement that, that, that procedure. Uh, we're doing vaccination sites. I was able to partner with a pharmacy. And we're actually be vaccinating. And so we're gonna be doing that. And then obviously, we're doing, consistently doing food distributions as well. So if there's any way that we could kind of duplicate those efforts, I would love to know more about that.
Oh, that'd be great.
Okay, great.
Yeah, because we're gonna be vaccinating five hundred people on this, every Wednesday, we're doing five hundred, well, this Wednesday. But then moving forward, it's a thousand of people every Wednesday until we run out.
Letitia, is it, is it one particular pharmacy, like Walgreens or C V S or?
No, it's a black-owned pharmacy, isn't it? It is. So she contacted me, she's a Pearland, she contacted me, and now we've teamed up. And now she's gonna get, um, she's gonna get, you know, she'll be able to do some billables, which keeps her, you know, open um, with folks that have insurance. The state is giving them some type of stipend to kind of do the work. Um, and then, yeah, we're teaming up, so it's really cool. And we're gonna be touching, so the city still has not done mobile, mobile test, mobile vaccination sites still.
Waiting till Abbott hears about that.
Yeah, none, none. And so, so what I'm doing now is I've, I've, I've teamed up with the ministers in, um, the East End and Fifth Ward, Second Ward and Third Ward. And we're now gonna pop in different, kind of like my pop-up kitchens we're doing, when we were popping up doing meals, hot meals. Um, we're now gonna be popping in certain communities and doing vaccinations.
Well, obviously, the people who are coming in are not yet immunized. That's why they're there. So what we will want to do is, again, not the full voter registration, but hand out
Yes.
the mailing forms. And for Pearland, we will need to make sure we have Harris and Rosoria County forms. Actually, as close as Pearland is to the county line, we might be able to use some Fort Bend handouts too.
Okay, so these are only gonna be Houston side, the pharmacies in Pearland, but we're only working in Houston. We're gonna only be working in Harris County.
Oh, okay.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah. All the locations are gonna be, we're really gonna be touching the communities that just have not had anyone come in their community.
Well, keep this in mind because we are prepared
Okay.
to do them in, what, four different languages or five?
Okay.
We've got people deputized and ready to work in all the area counties.
Okay, okay. Yeah, well, no, this is great. I mean, let's maybe talk offline. Just give me some organizational structure of how we can rule that out. Um, and maybe this Wednesday is too soon, but moving forward, I would love to incorporate the work that y'all are doing.
Yeah, let's stay in touch. Yeah.
Yeah, that, that sounds really great. That sounds really great.
All right, Letitia, thank you very much for, uh, uh, speaking at our meeting. Uh, this was really enlightening and you're always a wonderful speaker. So we just loved it.
Yeah, thank you, Letitia.
We appreciate you.
Now, thank y'all so much. I literally have goosebumps. This is such a great conversation. And I just, I appreciate you including me and, and, and just allowing me to be honest and authentic about what I feel daily. And, um, and this is how, I think this is really how change happens. So thank you so, 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 so much. And if any of y'all are retired and want a tutor, let me know because you've got kiddos that need tutors. All right, one quick To your kids in your spare time.
One quick announcement before we close the meeting. Our next meeting is on May third, uh, same time, uh, doors open at six fifteen, the meeting starts at six thirty. And we, we're gonna go back to the border. We have a special guest from Amnesty International USA, uh, Denise Bell. She is the subject matter expert at Amnesty International USA. And she's gonna talk about the issues at the border about migrants and asylum seekers. Okay. So, and we'll see you all, uh, next, next month.